Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for July 11th, 2023. That is a call to order. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
Councillor Guth.
Councillor Hahnstein.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torry.
Here as well. With no scheduled public appearances this evening, that will bring us to citizens' comments and petitions. Are there any members of the public that wish to make comment on items this evening? Items that are not scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and we do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes so everybody gets a fair and equal opportunity to speak. Sir, come on up.
Hey, guys. Yeah, I just, I wrote this to keep it under three minutes. So, my name is Jason Teetz. I'm a Roaring Fork Valley native and the president of Timberline Bank in Aspen, which is one of the only locally owned community banks left in town. And we purchased our building located at 122 West Main Street, which is kitty corner from Pepke Park and next to the former Hotel Aspen in 2017. We made that our permanent home after leasing space around town since our business was established in 2004. And one of the largest selling points of that property that we acquired was the two-hour street parking on Main Street, which was available, was available daily until 3:00 PM, at which point it converted to a bus lane during rush hour. This parking on Main Street was taken away last year during the bridge and Pepke Bus Stop construction projects. That closure appeared to be temporary. However, when we reached out to the city after the completion of those projects, we were informed that the parking was not returning and would be converted to a 24/7 bus lane. There was no outreach or communication received about this from the city or anyone else at any point. And I've spoken with other businesses and residents along the corridor who also lost parking, and they have expressed similar disappointment in the removal of the parking and the lack of outreach from the city. So I'm here today hoping for a compromise on the 100 West Block of Main Street, the daily outbound traffic jam rarely reaches us. And candidly, when I left about 10 minutes ago to come over here, the traffic jam was nowhere near our block. So just another data point there. And if it ever does reach us, it's well after 3:00 PM. And this lane, in my opinion, is a shared resource that is not being utilized at all, at all, or excuse me, during, not being utilized at all during business hours on most days. So I was advised to work with city staff before coming before council, and Pete Rice with the Engineering Department was initially helpful, but has stopped returning my phone calls or emails. So I would again stress that we're willing and hoping to come to a compromise. Our customer visits are typically very short. So the consideration of a short-term 10, 15, or 30-minute loading zone rather than two hours, as previously, would be all that we ask, and completely removing our street parking without any notice or discussion is extremely disappointing from the perspective of a business owner in Aspen. And we are receiving daily complaints from our customers, particularly our customers who are elderly, disabled, and/or have small children. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We'll come back to that at the end of citizen comments. Other citizens that wish to make comment this evening? Tony?
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg. And I just wanted to compliment the city on a very successful Fourth of July parade and all the events that went around with that. The egress and ingress into town worked really, really well coming along Hallam Street, and a few people suggested that maybe possibly that should be our new Highway 82. You're supposed to laugh at that one.
I'm not going to laugh anymore, Lee.
Exactly. Good. So tonight, you have on the consent calendar coming up, you have two items. One has to do with the lumberyard affordable housing. And one of them has to do, this is the second one, about extension of services. And there's a history that's located in here that says that the city has paid the Transportation Impact Analysis by Freer &amp; Pierce to the tune of $76,000. So I hope that they're going to be retained to continue studying the transportation impacts. And I didn't see anything listed in the consent calendar as to what was going to be moved forward in the Transportation Impact Analysis. And I have brought forward a couple of questions in prior meetings about the traffic light on Highway 82. And in all good consciousness, I cannot fathom the City of Aspen approving 480 bedrooms going into the entrance to Aspen that is already at a gridlock, not one hour of the day, but many times four to five hours a day. And the solutions that the city has come forward with so far, I think the last time when I spoke, I said, "I'm not a mathematician," but I calculated the numbers. I think it's, what, roughly 488 beds? And the city's proposing for their transportation impact, 50 people are going to ride their bikes, but we know they can't ride them in the wintertime. 50 people are going to ride the bus, and 50 people are going to take the cars. So that's 150 people. My question to the council was, what's going to happen with the other 336 people? Are they not going to go to work that day? So what I'm trying to do is come forward with a solution. As you know, I have been a proponent of an urban gondola connecting Ruby Park, going over Shadow Mountain, crosses Merle to Open Space, runs along Highway 82, connects Buttermilk, the airport, Brush Creek, goes to Highlands, and hopefully to Snowmass. And I have not seen any discussion on that. And I know that certain members of the council are not for an urban gondola. And I've asked the question, why are you not for it? So that's just the questions that I wanted to bring forward tonight. And what I'm looking for is solutions. And I think almost everyone in this room is affordable housing. I've lived in this area, in the City of Aspen, for 40 years, and I've been in Snowmass again about...
More than 40.
More than 40. Your daughter swimming, Ward, when she was a baby. And I still don't have affordable housing. And so I'm definitely a proponent of affordable housing. And I don't think it should be called affordable housing. I think it should be called workforce housing. And when you just speak to most people, the employees at different lodges and whatnot, it's the workers who are down valley, who have to commute to their job. And I know that you're focusing on rental and some family-oriented units, but I would beg to say, we have enough family housing right now. And I think that we really need to concentrate on the workforce housing. And while we may have 600 people by the time everyone has, you know, an extra person in their living room or whatnot, that with the amount of growth between Glenwood and Aspen, that it's going to be a drop in the bucket. So I just wanted to, like, everyone's experiencing that shortage of housing. So I just wanted to put those comments forward. And again, my main...
Thanks, Toni.
...goal is to come up with a solution to the entrance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Toni. Are there other members of the public that wish to make comments this evening? Looking online, we have one attendee online. And I'll ask one more time, anybody in the room want to make comment this evening? All right. Bring it back to council table then, and that'll bring us to council member, mayor's comments. Council members. Sam, can I start with you?
I don't really have any comments, other than I'd love to address what was just talked about in the Timberline Bank and the parking situation.
Great. John?
You know, I was going to say some recent news about the climate and what's been going on around the world, but I think we're all aware of the forest fires in Canada and the fact that we had the hottest day in the last 125,000 years over the Fourth of July weekend. And we are entering an El Nino phase, which, for anyone that pays attention to the weather, knows that it increases erratic weather patterns. In fact, just over the last couple days, Vermont has gotten two months' worth of rain in less than 20, in less than 48 hours, sorry. There's flooding all around the world. I just worry that we're not acting fast enough. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, John. Ward, comments this evening?
Yeah, I don't think we've had a public meeting since CML Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference. Three of us attended that annual conference of elected officials from municipalities around the state, along with city managers and attorneys. And it's really a valuable time for us to spend networking and making connections with other communities, comparing notes about what common solutions, and sharing some of our ideas with other people around the state. Then, I've been thinking about this for a while, and this next, I'm going to make a plea and a pledge, kind of a combination here. We've had a few meetings with the new council, and it takes a while for a new council to get to know each other and to mesh. And I just have some comments, one of which is that our council is facing three really wicked problems: the lumberyard, the armory, and the entrance to Aspen. And a wicked problem is a problem with many interdependent factors, making them seem impossible to solve because of the factors that are often incomplete influx and difficult to define. Solving wicked problems requires a deep understanding of the stakeholders involved and the innovative approach provided by design, design thinking. So we're not going to find a solution to any of these problems that's going to make everybody happy. But I think we all need to make a pledge to each other on council and in the community to listen completely and thoroughly, and perhaps accept something that you may not really 100% be behind. Churchill said, "Perfection is the enemy of progress." We need to make progress on these problems. We need to focus on the windshield and not the rearview mirror. If we undermine past city councils' decisions, that creates delays and delays progress on the pressing needs that we have. So I encourage everybody to look through the windshield, to look at the future, to dedicate themselves to that which is best for our community, and perhaps not to the best of each individual's bottom line or profit or dollars. People don't like change, but all three of these wicked problems are going to require change in that we accept change. So we have to, we have to be able to embrace it, knowing that there's no perfect solution. I want to put aside desires for personal gain and strive for what is best for the community, and do not worship profit and the dollar, rather than that which benefits the community of Aspen. Here's Victor Frankl quote that I have said a few times before, "But between the stimulus and response, there's a space. In that space lies our freedom and power to choose our responses. In our response lies our growth and our freedom." So I'm pledging and pleading with the community, with the council, to listen intently, completely, and let's progress, make some progress on these wicked problems.
Thanks, Ward. Comments from me this evening? I want to start off by just thanking all of the City of Aspen staff. On a day-to-day basis, all of you guys work really hard. You do a great job for us and for our community. And then beyond that, you actually spend some of your off time working for the city as well. So to all of you that participated on the Fourth of July to make that happen, it didn't go unnoticed. Thank you so much for being there. I also want to go back a few weeks earlier than that, when we did the mural out in front of the Wheeler Opera House. We had a handful, half dozen staffers that were there literally from 7:00 in the morning till probably 8:00 at night. And that was on a Sunday. Those are some of the things that go unnoticed to our community at large, but not to us. And I just want to say thank you to all of you. And that goes for you as well, Sarah. You know, thank you for your leadership. I saw you at the Fourth of July working all day and all night. So I appreciate everything that you guys did. And Fourth of July was fantastic. A lot of great feedback. And that includes, I think we'll have a chance to kind of revisit the Fourth and see if there's anything we want to change or improve. But I just want to take this opportunity to say that the Belly Up's participation with the free concert in the street was really great. It was, I think, a wonderful community trade-off for the ability to do the concerts in the park during the winter. And I saw some of the Belly Up owners and management, and they as well were enjoying it. So I think we have a real opportunity to move forward with some more of that if they're going to be continuing to participate with us. The next thing I wanted to talk about was something called Aspen Chill Out Wednesdays. If you don't know about it, you should. Wednesdays, 5:30 to 7:30 PM, every Wednesday in July, over at Wagner Park on the Sister Cities Plaza. There'll be music and games, a lot of family fun, ice cream. But really, it's intended to be an opportunity for all of our community to come out and get together. So that's every Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30 over at Wagner Park. And then I'd like to finish my comments just by revisiting Jason's comments from Main Street and ask council members. This is not the first time that I've heard from neighbors and businesses on Main Street about this change that was made. Sam, you wanted to address this. Would you like to share your comments?
Well, I'm not sure. I might need more information. But on the surface, I do feel like the parking should be returned until 2:00 PM. I didn't, I never saw an issue with it before, and I would need to understand why it was taken away. But this is the first I've ever heard of it, so I don't want to be so one-sided. I just want to make sure we come to a resolution on it.
All right.
Yeah.
Ward?
Yeah, I think it was last winter I spoke, or maybe this spring, spoke to one of the residents on that, that block. Is there any alley parking, off-street parking for, for the bank, for the community bank?
Yeah, we have, we have some limited parking in the alley. But the issue is that the alley is often blocked. It's not, it's not nearly as accessible for the, for the mobility challenge people that I mentioned when I, when I spoke. So the street parking is about 10 steps from our front doors, so really, really beneficial for those.
One of the things I spoke with, I think Pete within, and this resident, was that possibility of adding some parking on First or just off of Main Street, I don't know, be within a half a block of the bank, but particularly after the music festival, when there's not as much traffic going, pedestrian and bicycle traffic going along that way, going back to the music tent. But that's, that's something, a solution that I considered. And I think, I can't remember where we left it with Pete, but I'm aware of it, and I've made some suggestions as well.
Yeah, and there's, there's been some two-hour parking added. The, the problem with that is that the roads are not maintained over there, especially in winter. So, you know, it's half a block for you and me, and a lot of people, that's fine. But for, for a lot of people, it's not necessarily fine. And we're also in the middle of a construction zone on all sides right now. So if you go over there, the parking right now is just an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to make solutions here, but I, I'm aware of it. And let's see what we can do about finding some solution that works. I mean, in the beginning of the winter, if we start plowing that block instead of not plowing that block, that might free up parking spaces. But let's, let's see what we can do about supplying some parking spaces.
Thanks. I as well am interested in having this conversation. I, I think that the parking should be allowed there. You know, it serves a couple of reasons. One, as Sam was pointing out, I don't know of any real negative interactions that have happened. But, you know, as, as Aspen's commercial core gets higher and higher priced, and our new code language, we have pushed free-market residential off of Main Street to allow for commercial and affordable housing development. I think that we should be facilitating some parking as well. So I, I also would like to continue this conversation. John? Yes.
I do, too.
That'd be great. Sarah, if we can figure out some way to have a forum about this and get some information around it, that'd be great.
We'll schedule it. We'll reissue the information that was issued to council in September of 2022, expressing CDOT and RAFTA's concerns, as well as the letter from RAFTA making this request for this to not be parking. And the operational issues it's had for both your BRT and your local city routes were being sacrificed for timing by forcing them back into that traffic backup. This is particularly during summer months. This is, this is difficult when Independence Pass is open.
That'd be great. Yeah, if you could share that information with us again, and then we'll see if we want to continue the conversation. That'd be great. Yeah, if you can share that information with us again, then we'll see if we wanna continue the conversation. Thank you for coming in. Agenda amendments this evening? I don't see any. I, we are scheduled for an executive session at the end of our meeting.
Yeah, there, there are requested agenda amendments to pull off resolutions eighty-three and eighty-four from the agenda. We don't have any other amendments, but we are requesting that those two be pulled off the consent agenda.
For conversation or for continuance or?
Deleted from the agenda, removed.
Eighty-three and eighty-four?
And eighty-four. Apparently eighty-four has an incorrect contract and they're both incorrect.
Okay.
They will come back, they will come back to you.
Good.
But not tonight.
Okay, great. So those will be, we'll pull those off. And then what's that?
Eighty-three and eighty-four. Scott Miller may have.
Resolution one oh seven, down lower on the, on the agenda, takes the place of eighty-four.
Okay, thank you. City manager's comments this evening?
I also wanna thank the community for a fabulous and safe Independence Day. Our numbers do seem maybe a little lower than where they have been in past, and that's not uncommon for a Tuesday holiday for, for that to happen. But nevertheless, we had a lot of staff from parks to rec to streets to special events, police with our partner agencies at RAFTA, the fire department, the hospital, many more, ambulance district out there keeping our community a place where people could have fun and, and we didn't have to worry about mass issues affecting their, their enjoyment. I also just wanted to update the council that pull my notes. Oh, this afternoon, we did have a follow-up conversation with the governor's office staff and CDOT staff regarding the Affordable Housing Legislation Bill that failed in the last legislative session to get a preview of what they're thinking for the next legislative session. I do think we will likely see a series of bills. And so we've had some discussion about perhaps, does that all need to come in one legislative session? Could we, is that way we can really ensure that it's quality language that meets the entire state's needs in each bill? But things like upzoning are still on the table. There's still some things around housing standards, housing assessment that need to be in a bill if the, the state thinks that needs to go forward. I'll continue to work with cast directors to, to formulate a more formal position on behalf of cast from those discussions. And I'll keep you updated on what those look like. Thanks.
Board reports this evening? It's an opportunity to share brief board reports. Any?
Haven't had any, no.
Okay. My only board report is that RAFTA is meeting this Thursday and Sam and I will both be in attendance remotely. That'll bring us to our consent calendar this evening. Consent calendar this evening is gonna be resolution number eighty-eight. Water Treatment Facility Campus Improvements Design, resolution number ninety-two, Construction Contract for Cozy Point Ranch Phase Two of the Grading and Drainage Improvements, resolution ninety-four, Contract for Wheeler Boiler Replacement, resolution number ninety-five, Juniper Hill Road Improvements Contract, resolution number ninety-six, Design Engineering Services at Truscott Underpass, resolution one oh one, which is a purchase of three phase transformers, resolution one oh three, Craftco Paver Machine Fleet Replacement, finally. Resolution number one oh four, Red Brick Arts Gallery and Corridor Improvements Professional Services, resolution one oh five, Valley Fine Art Lease Extension, resolution one oh seven, which is the Cushing Terrell Extended Entitlements Process for Lumberyard, resolution one oh eight, Appointment of New Assistant City Attorney and the draft minutes of May ninth and twenty-third. Before we get to the remainder of the consent calendar and pull items for discussion, I would like to immediately pull resolution number one oh eight and give our city attorney an opportunity to introduce the new assistant city attorney if resolution one oh eight is to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, the council authorized the expansion of the city attorney's office to add a third attorney in the, for the 2023 budget. We, through normal processes, solicited applicants, received numerous very well-qualified applicants for this position. And we decided through our efforts to offer the position to Louisa Byrne, who is here and is, is certainly willing to come up and answer any questions you may have. Ms. Byrne's been in the Roaring Fork Valley since 2016. She has recently served as deputy district attorney for the Ninth Judicial District. But prior to that time, has also been in private practice. She has extensive court experience and will, we believe, make a great addition to our team in the city attorney's office. So again, Ms. Byrne's here and along with her husband and is certainly willing to answer any questions you may have. And I can answer them also. I would note that this is before you because of our charter requirement that the city council confirm and provide such assistance as the council may deem necessary for the city attorney's office. So we feel a formal confirmation is always required for hiring a city attorney or assistant city attorney.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Ms. Byrne, if you don't mind, if you come up for just a second, we'd love to introduce you to the community more than anything. We had an opportunity to say hello to you and meet you briefly, but just wanted to give you an opportunity, maybe tell us a little bit more about yourself and how you feel being in Aspen and working with the team.
Well, I'm really excited to start working with the city attorney team. I have a strong belief in public service, spent five years as a district attorney in our valley and serving our community. And so I'm really excited to continue that work of public service and in the community that I live in and that I love and that I'm raising my family in.
Are you an outdoor enthusiast? Are you on the ski hill at lunch breaks when we see you up there at lunch breaks? Or are you out hiking and biking the trails? How do you enjoy Aspen?
Skiing and biking and occasionally making my way uphill if necessary.
If necessary?
I prefer lift service.
Any other council member questions or comments?
Road or mountain?
Mountain.
Mountain bike?
And your husband's name?
Aaron Byrne.
Aaron, nice to meet you.
Pleasure.
Pleasure.
That sounds kinda close to Aaron Burr, but I know that's out of our time.
It, it does. There's a lot of Aaron Burr jokes in our house.
It's a pleasure to meet you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for approval of resolution number one oh eight. This is the appointment of the new assistant city attorney.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, a further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote for resolution number one oh eight, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hoenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward for joining us next Monday.
Yep.
At this time, council members, are there any other items that you would like to pull for discussion this evening?
Number ninety-two, I have one question.
We have a question on number ninety-two. Any others?
I have questions or comments on ninety-six, one oh four, and one oh five.
Ninety-six. Truscott Underpass, one oh four, Red Brick Arts Gallery, one oh five, Valley Fine Art Lease. And I'm gonna go ahead and add one oh seven. So let's start off with, we are looking, the first one was thank you. We'll start with ninety-two. This is the Cozy Point Ranch Phase Two Grading and Drainage Improvements.
I just wanna start by saying I fully support this project, but it's not every day that we get a contract that exceeds the budget allotted to it. And I just wanted to ask the very simple question, the extra cost, the fund it comes out of, is that fund filled to the point where it's like prepared for moments like this? Or is it an opportunity cost for some other project that the department won't be able to fulfill because of this?
Good question. Thank you. My name's Matt Kuhn. I'm filling in for Mike Tinte. He's been shepherding this project. In short, the Parks Fund, the one hundred fund, has sufficient fund balance to add these funds to this contract. That'll happen in a fall supplemental. Our fund balance, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was in the several millions of dollars heading into this year. And I anticipate and have vetted with our team and the finance department that we can absorb that within our fund balance.
Okay, that's good. I wanted to make sure the pickleball courts are still happening. It's not because of this, so that's all I add.
On that topic, our pickleball courts are gonna go out to bid here pretty soon. And so we'll know whether our allocated funds will suffice for that.
Okay, that's wonderful to hear. Thank you, Matt.
Couple of quick questions. And we'll talk about pickleball courts some of the time. But this increase, and I understand the increase, i- it's sizable. Instead of other projects, how, how does this impact? We have a lot of plans going on at Cozy Point. How does it impact Cozy Point in, in its timeline that we've set out for the improvements that we're trying to make there?
This is really the foundation. So we need to get this work done, especially the septic system, the O W T S that we referenced in the memo. We need to get that done and improved. And then all of this lays the groundwork for the adjacent structures. So the projects that you've seen and we've discussed heading into twenty-four and twenty-five tend to be more structural in nature. Whereas this is the in-ground infrastructure that will connect into those systems.
You know, there's a former councilperson that was serving up here that, whose voice is echoing in my head right now, wondering if we have reached out to the equestrian community at all for participation in this project and going forward. Are we able to do that?
So as you might recall, the city is essentially partners with the equestrian operation, Aspen, or sorry, Cozy Point Ranch LLC. They're the ones that operate. They lease the ranch from us. We're fifty-fifty partners in their revenue. So if they succeed and bring in additional revenue, we also see that as a revenue source. As you know, we don't see a lot of revenue from Cozy Point Ranch. And that really, to me, highlights that the margins of what is being offered by Cozy Point Ranch LLC are very thin. And they're essentially providing a community amenity for equestrian folks in this community who are not the uber wealthy. I'm sure there are plenty of folks out there that have adequate resources, but the resources that they're paying to, or the funds they're paying to use the ranch as an equestrian center are not that substantial. Does that answer your question?
The short answer, though, is we have talked to them in the past and there is not necessarily an interest in investing in the foundational infrastructure necessary to keep the place safe and sanitary, not only for Cozy Point LLC users, but there is many other users of Cozy Point beyond that user group who benefit from these improvements.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, I, I think that we should be putting out a message to our community. I've been talking to people that I know. I'll bring them over to you. I'll get them in touch with you. But I think there's opportunity here. We have a very supportive community, especially in this arena. Thank you, Ward. So anyway, I, I would love to get some financial help, especially in light of this recent revelation about what this, the grounds itself are gonna, are gonna take. So I'll, I'll connect with you offline and we'll see if we can maybe get some kind of campaign going using our partner that we have existing, so.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, this concerned me as well because it's a, some of the stuff was done in-house team and I think when we went through this in the budget season, we knew it was gonna be a big expense. We were, we were well aware of that. But it, it comes as a surprise for it to be this much of a add-on. So I, I don't know what the, the solution is, but I just wanna comment on it that if we need to be going out of house on the design, and we have some stuff in here in the consent calendar where we are bringing on consultants for design work. But just to reconsider or to think about that next time we're looking at a large project, if we need to, to go out of house to get better, better figures.
So it, it's worth mentioning, it's not unique to this project. We've had our engineers on the Maroon Creek Multi-Use Trail for the last eighteen months, providing us with periodic estimates for construction, which we've used to populate our capital budget. That has been a four-million-dollar placeholder and that's been vetted by our engineers at multiple levels. Our initial guaranteed maximum price that we're negotiating with the contractor is six-point-five million. So we are seeing kind of across the board fairly significant deviations in construction costs. And it's, while we have always kind of conservatively budgeted our projects, I think what we're seeing in the actual cost to bring in contractors for civil site work, we're competing against all the private development occurring and those rates are very high. And as we head into future years of budget, rather than adding a ten or twenty percent contingency, we're starting to look at fifty percent contingencies in our budget. So you're gonna see some fairly significant jumps if this continues. And we suspect it will continue with the Maroon Creek Multi-Use Trail as well as Isla and Pickle, Pickleball and Tennis Facility when those bids come in.
Yeah, we've seen that with capital projects the last couple of years, where massive increases over what was budgeted and projected. And I, I really like the idea of guaranteed maximum price or not-to-exceed contracts. And oftentimes here at the council table, we're given a lot of bright and shiny things and we wanna say yes to them all. But we need feedback from you and, and Michael and us. And when, when we're putting too much on your plate to let us know what's gonna, what is going to be sacrificed or delayed if we add something else to your, to your workload.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'll say is put another plug in for an appropriate sign out there. It's such a shame that people drive by that and they don't really know what a great facility it is and that it's a partnership between the City of Aspen and Picking County Farm Collaborative as well as the Equestrian Group. It'd be wonderful if people knew that.
I think that's on our radar, so we're, we're working towards that.
Thanks, Matt. The next one was ninety-six. This is Design and Engineering Services at Truscott Underpass.
What'd you do to your wing?
Whoa.
Howdy, everyone. Brian Long, Trail System Manager with the Parks Department, and John Spees, the Open Space Manager. My wing was hurt loading the third row seat into my SUV. It's not a fun story.
Oh, you have, you have to have a better story than that.
We appreciate the truth, though. That is
I, I pulled this, we did, you know, we, at E O T C, we have discussion in, I'm just curious how this ties in, if it does tie into the Buttermilk Underpass. It sounds like it's just snow where the underpass goes under Highway eighty-two onto the A B C Trail as snow removal. Are, are you planning on looking at snow melt or what are, what are we, what's the goal here?
Great, great question, Ward. This, this ties in very, very closely with the E O T C's project to connect Truscott to Buttermilk on the south side of the highway opposite from the A B C Trail. And if you're familiar with the Truscott Underpass in its current condition, we've got a twelve-foot trail intersection with the A B C Trail, a twelve-foot tunnel, twelve-foot tunnel entrance on the south, and then it hits a four-and-a-half-foot wide little dark canyon. Our machines can't remove snow in there. The highway plow spoils melt directly onto it. And that's, that's what we wanna connect to with this new twelve-foot trail that'll connect to Buttermilk. And it's just, it's just insufficient as, as a, as a critical link between these, these parts of the trail system. So this design and engineering is to, to widen that, to give it a little breathing room off the highway so that some passive solar can come into that space and use the power of the sun to melt and let our snow removal machines get in there and have a better connection with the E O T and let our snow removal machines get in there and have a better connection with the EOTC's Truscott to Buttermilk Trail.
I've only lived in Aspen for four-plus decades, and I still am challenged with directions on Highway 82. When you said the north and south sides, I, in my mind, I'm, I shouldn't think Up Valley and Down Valley would be better. Are we talking about the section that is, if you're going, let's see, on the Sky Mountain Park side at the end of the runway? That, that area is where you're thinking of?
Yeah, yeah. The, the existing ABC Trail is on the north side of the highway, so to speak. It runs at an oblique, but that, we call that the north side. The south side is the side with the old historic highway bridge, the Pyramid Neighborhood, the Pomegranate, and Home Team Barbecue in the Inn at Aspen.
And the fact that EOTC decided not to do anything with the Buttermilk Underpass or Overpass, does that have any bearing on this project?
No, they're still moving forward on the, the connection trail to get from, to connect Truscott, the Old Highway Bridge, Pomegranate, Inn at Aspen, and the Up Valley Buttermilk Bus Stop. There's a plan to, to connect all those with a paved multi-use trail. And this'll be one of the anchors at one end of that trail. The other anchor was, is the crossing at Buttermilk, whether that's the existing at grade or a below grade or an above grade. That's, that's the other end of this.
Let's see if I can pull that up, because I'm still not 100% clear in my mind.
The Inn at Aspen side, right?
Yeah, the Inn at Aspen side.
Pomegranate.
Buttermilk side.
Yeah, the Buttermilk side, and this is a trail connection for the, oh, okay. I was thinking of the pedestrian underpass at the end of the runway. This is a tayac bridge?
This is the, the Truscott, Truscott Underpass goes under 82 off, off ABC Trail. And the, the winter snow removal crews I supervise have a real hard time with the snow underneath with the current existing condition of the, the underpass. This is gonna improve on that and dovetail with.
And connect to, connect to the old, the old bridge that is used as a pedestrian way now.
Yep.
And then new sidewalk will be put in from there down to the Buttermilk traffic light.
You've got it.
Okay, my bad. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, thank you very much. I don't think there's any other questions around that one.
No, we, we're all for it.
Thanks. 90, that was 96. Ward, you also asked for 104, which is, nobody wants to pull the paver, huh? Okay.
I want to, but.
104 is the Red Brick Arts Gallery and Corridor Improvements Professional Services.
Mayor Torrey, City Council, Scott Chisholm, Director of Business Services, and Acting Project Manager for this particular project.
Yeah, this is another one of those concern. I'm not just focusing on Harry Teague's, but oftentimes we get change orders and they, and I want to know. I was trying to compare what the original scope was and what this scope is. And is, there's a change in scope, but it's also increasing the cost of the services by $124,000?
So if you think of it as really a two-phase design effort, so the first phase that we contracted for, and the scope is now complete, you know, last year, was for that initial schematic design effort, working with the tenants and establishing, you know, the ideas, the concepts that we really wanted to develop. And what's in front of you this evening is the rest. So, you know, taking those schematic designs, getting them documented to a construction level and a permit level so we can proceed with, with permitting for the project. And with the, the schedule goal is to be in a position to begin work on these improvements in early October of this year.
So this is to take us from conceptual to construction drawings and ready for building permit?
Correct, as well as construction administration support. So it's, it's our intent with this particular project. We also are engaged currently on a, on a Phase One effort with CMGC, basically a contractor to provide us guidance and when it comes to pricing, with the intent to, again, get to that guaranteed maximum price. And so that will be a Phase Two for that effort. And this, and consultant Harry T. Architects would be involved in this change order. It includes time for that involvement. So it'd basically be a cohesive team between owner, architect, and builder.
Did I see that the, it includes a bit more, includes a bit more of the Red Brick than it was at bathrooms? And were there a couple of other?
Exactly. Good, good catch. As part of this scope adjustment, there are two restrooms in the kind of rear part of the building, behind the grassroots television studio. And those bathrooms also need attention and improvements. So we've, as far as the design approach, have included those comprehensively with the other bathrooms that are being addressed as part of design improvements. Again, and as we get along the road with the contractor that we're working with or the builder to identify what the cost implications would be for those added restrooms.
And what's being done with grassroots space?
Right now, nothing. The scope of work doesn't include any kind of improvements for the leased grassroots television space.
I thought I saw that. It included something, an increase in the scope.
Well, again, it's relative to the restrooms, that are the shared restrooms for grassroots television, for Aspen Public Radio, as well as the Aspen Recreation side of the building.
And I want to go forward with this, but I'd love for us to, at the council table here, to be briefed in or to share with us what the conceptual, what it looks like. Because it sounds as though that was completed in January, and we haven't seen anything. I'd love to see what Harry's noodling.
Sure. Can certainly come back in, in a work session environment.
At this point, we could do it as an info-only. It's not a matter of discussion or policy for the council.
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up as, as necessary. But yeah, it's, it's exciting. A lot of, I would, you know, the scope of work is primarily aesthetic improvements to enhance the, like I said, the restrooms, as well as the, the main gallery space.
Yeah, I look forward to it, the completion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thanks. This is a contract for an agreement with Harry Teague Architects, but this is in preparation for a project that is budgeted at $2 million?
We have a $2 million, $70,000 budget currently.
And is this, is the $2 million coming out of, I, I see Arts Fund Capital Project. Is, is this the former Wheeler Rett Fund?
It's the Arts and Culture Fund, and these are in dollars, tax dollars collected since the public vote.
This was, it's a project on the, on the 2022 and 2023 capital plans.
Do we anticipate more projects at the Red Brick that will be of this nature?
That'll be up to the council. The council really hasn't had the appetite to revisit master planning to that, to the Red Brick or the Ice Garden. So at this point, we feel like these are interim improvements to, to, that have to be taken care of due to delayed maintenance. Particularly the restrooms in this facility are, still remind you of when you were in elementary school.
Seen them.
That's why I go over there. Thanks for pointing that out. Well, that, that's fine. I, you know, I guess I, the only thing that I'd say is I appreciate the budgeting. I appreciate that this comes out of new revenues that have been freed up by the community to be used in this, in this way. And I just ask if there's more, because I'm just conscientious of the, what was the Wheeler Rett, Wheeler Fund and the Wheeler Rett's funding and how we've changed those. So I was just like, $2 million coming out of that was just, I just wanted to know if there's more like this coming behind it. It doesn't sound like it.
It would be your, again, up to you. I would tell you, the list of wants from tenants is very long. However, they're receiving space at one of the most rock-bottom prices.
Yeah.
And so we would need to have a conversation about how much subsidy would continue.
Thank you. Thanks, Lot.
Sure.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
The next one was Resolution Number 105. This is Valley Fine Art Lease Extension.
Good evening there, members of council.
Hi.
Lisa and Peterson with the Wheeler Opera House. Hello.
Couple of questions. Is Valley Fine Arts current on their rent, all fees and sales tax collection?
Yes, to my knowledge.
Okay. And the final question is, how does this rate, the renewal, compare to free market rates?
That is a good question. I haven't done that analysis. The renewal, the renewal is based on the terms that were in their original lease that continued to be escalated by a CPI factor each year.
And that goes back to 2011?
That was the beginning of the term of this contract.
Yeah, so the current rate is just under $5,000 a month base rent for approximately 500 square feet. We would wait and see what the responses to the RFPR and what are the favorable rates presented by proponents. And that, I think that the council could expect is typical, you'll be asked to subsidize to less than market on this space.
Yeah, I, I think it's good that this is extended, so that space is not vacant through the winter season. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. The next one that I requested was Resolution 107. This is Cushing Terrell Extended Entitlements Process for Lumber Yard. I just wanted to have a public conversation. You know, anything tied to the lumber yard and where we are and where we're moving is important to a lot of people. So I just wanted to keep this in front of us and have council conversation just briefly. You guys have the memo in front of you, so you see the breakdown of stuff. Chris, can you just explain for public? Cushing Terrell is the vendor that we've been working with. They have done work for us that I think that, that we probably are still owing them for, perhaps. But we also have work that we need them to be doing. And so while we continued the lumber yard hearing on their ordinance, there's work that needs to be going on with this. Would you just speak to that in light of this contract?
Sure. Cushing Terrell was contracted as the design team lead architect for the lumber yard project back in 2021. Through the end of 2022, their fees were guaranteed. Now that we're into the entitlements process, the fees are no longer guaranteed. So as, for example, the P&amp;Z hearings got continued, there was extra hours in there for them to provide that support, provide answers to questions, do additional design work. There's also additional funds included for the ongoing work with City Council and the entitlements process with City Council. They're in the process of answering numerous questions from the most recent public hearing, and they are preparing for both the work session on July 24th and the upcoming continuation of the public hearing on August 8th. In addition to that, there's additional support for ongoing air quality analysis, which we've not stopped, but that's only $12,000 out of this larger amount. And to actually answer Tony's question, there's an additional $24,000 in transportation consulting support. These are all not-to-exceed numbers, so they'll be billed when we see the actual work get done. So it doesn't mean that we are obligated to this amount of money per se. We review those invoices and the hours spent based on the actual work done.
Thank you for that. Council members, are there any other questions on this? I just wanted a public conversation.
I was asked real quick how long this money is expected to last through until it runs out again?
It, it's more than enough to cover us through the end of August. But again, we don't know how much work they're gonna need to do. So this will avoid us having to come back to complete the process. And these funds are within the existing budget. There's about a million and a half left remaining in the budget. And this will come out of that.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate the information.
Remove, we adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Further discussion for me. Thank you to all the staff members that are here that sit through consent calendar, not knowing if we're gonna be asking questions on your item or not. We appreciate you being here. These are more of those off-hour hours that you put in, so thank you guys very much.
Take care of that wing.
With that, could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. This evening on our agenda, we have no notice of call-up, we have no first readings of ordinances, and we have no public hearings. That will bring us to action items this evening. This is Resolution Number 106, Burlingame Ranch Phase Three Affordable Housing Unit Sales.
Mayor and council, you had a work session discussion last night about this item. And Resolution 106 has been updated to reflect the outcome of the conversation last night. I can go ahead and put that on, on the screen, although that might take me a moment.
While he's doing that, just a point of order for the council is that you will need to make a motion to amend the resolution to include this language if you find it acceptable. Because it, because of us having to publish the packet with appropriate notice. So just as a heads up, we're gonna ask you by motion, one of you, if you so, are compelled to move for the inclusion of this language if it's appropriate. Thanks. Before you vote on the ordinance, the resolution itself.
I'm gonna need to be promoted to panelist. He's right there. Open it slowly. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, let's go to that section and then read it as well. This, and then if you are also able to, please increase the size of the Word document on the screen. It's a little difficult to read.
Sure.
So no changes were made in the sales unit component, sales, unit sales process, rather. This is reflective of what was in your draft resolution. You want to go through the rest? I was just trying to give you a little time.
Yeah, sure. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Aspen approving staff working together with APSHA to move forward with condominium unit sales for the Burlingame Ranch Phase Three Affordable Housing Project. The unit sales process, the sales process for Burlingame Ranch III shall utilize an APSHA lottery process based on the information shown below. Lottery groups number one, two, three, and four are described with a total of 74 units. The unit and income mix is shown with a total of 74 units in the APSHA lottery pool. And in addition to that, five City of Aspen units for a total of 79 units. The sales prices, as discussed, shall be based on the maximum sale prices for newly de-restricted ownership units effective January 1st, 2023, in the 2023 APSHA regulations. Under the heading of affordability, applicants shall not be allowed to bid up by one category for the Burlingame Ranch Phase Three sales process. Under rightsizing, a rightsizing pilot program, which would leverage priority in the lottery process as an incentive for up to five households to downsize to a unit for which they meet occupancy requirements under the APSHA regulations, shall be incorporated into the initial lottery and sales process for Burlingame Ranch Phase III. In the event that five households downsize within the first two lottery groups of the initial sale process, council may increase the cap of five units to allow more households to downsize as part of the second two lottery groups. Under employment location requirement, Under employment location requirement, a lottery priority will be provided to applicants who are employed within the Aspen urban growth boundary. This priority will be required for all initial sales and all future resales and will therefore be memorialized in the deed restrictions for units at Burlingame Ranch Phase Three. Introduced and adopted eleventh day of July, two thousand twenty-three.
A question for our attorney. Do we need to put a provision in there that the priority for employment, uh if no one meets that, that that is waived or?
I don't think into the the um not in not in the resolution, the deed restriction will reflect the the um the priority system and how how that will work. And it's um as a priority and under cap APSHA guidelines when nobody meets that that priority, that highest priority, it does go to to um the subsequent bidders or or um applicants. So I I I don't know if we need to say that any further here. I think uh my deed restriction that we will propose um can address that. If you wish to. Make it more clear in this resolution, that's up to you and we can change that. You can change that language here.
If it's in the deed restriction, I I would move that we adopt Resolution One Oh Six as amended.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, real quick question. Um are we memorializing, if that's the right word, the dates in this packet as when the bid period opens and the qual- no?
No.
Okay. Okay. Uh when when will that be decided then?
So in yesterday's packet was a tentative timeline.
Yeah.
That will be finalized once this um we need this resolution adopted to give us direction and then we can go through and make the changes necessary in home track. So as I mentioned last night, we might need a week or two that to adjust those timelines to ensure that the system's prepared to accept those applicants um and check their qualification status.
Okay. And then based from last night, the rightsizing thing, um if we find out that we get like twenty applicants that are looking to rightsize during the bidding period, can we come back and change the first two lottery groups or are we, is it only for lottery group three and four that we can make that change to open up more rightsizing for?
Uh if you would like us to delay and extend the lottery time periods longer, then we would be able to accommodate that more quickly. Um so you have to choose between having lottery one and two that run pretty close together, which doesn't necessarily coincide with council meetings to provide different directions before bidding begins.
Yeah.
Um or the alternative is that you delay bidding to accommodate the council's schedule.
There are two regular meetings in September that you could use to make that change in between lottery groups one and two and three and four. So the timing is there for that to be able to happen and it would give you uh the opportunity to respond to what we see in terms of the bid process for lotteries one and two, lottery groups one and two.
Do you have in this, did you just show a table that has that um groups one and two and three and four? Was that in there?
Which units are included in each lottery?
So uh three and four is forty-one units. So i- if there are more than?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we could come back and for lottery group three and four, we could potentially raise the the number rightsizing. That's all.
Yes.
Yeah, and just for clarification, an application uh for the first round, we carry through all the way through the fourth round with an additional five dollar fee. So if somebody were to in Sam's uh scenario, they would um want to downsize, there were no more five of those left that that it would go forward to um run to the second and third round or third and fourth round.
They wouldn't need to requalify. They would need to s- submit an additional bid, which is, like I like I said the last night, only a fi- five dollars for each bid. So you can bid on however many lotteries you qualify for.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up and and we'll see what happens. I think that we have the headroom in this to to make it happen for those that come forward. Um if it is a crazy number, I'm sure that um Chris will come back to us and say, wow, hey, we got some news for you.
Yeah, please update on how many people are trying to rightsize. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that. Uh I want to take a second, but yeah?
I would also encourage our APSHA board members to stay on top of that because you will receive frequent updates at your board meetings you can bring back to this group.
Uh we have a motion and a second, and so my further discussion is I just want to say, um you know, uh this job is uh often a lot of controversy, a lot of um uh challenge and and uh discussion with community members about uh very important topics. And um we should all celebrate that we are here and we are about to vote on this and putting these seventy-nine units into our community and to our city. Um it's something that you should be very proud of and I just wanted to share that because, you know, we do a lot of hard work and it takes years and years to see these things realized. So thank you to you, Chris, Sarah, of course, um but also to council members, um you know, this is the good stuff. With that, could we have a roll call vote for Resolution One Oh Six as amended?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Joyously, yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you.
Counsel, I just want to congratulate you. This is huge for the community. It's a lot of work that is twenty years in the making, maybe even a few more since since we bought the ranch, so to speak. And um stay tuned, we are planning a celebration uh and dedication of Phase Three for late September.
That's awesome. Yay.
I remember discussions about sound attenuation between floors, so.
That's all you, that's all you bring forward. I, yeah, just on the heels of that, Sarah, I really appreciate that. And yeah, for me, um you know, I when I was first elected to council in uh two thousand and three, Burlingame Ranch was one of the first issues that I dealt with. Um so for me, it's very, it's it's just such a pleasure to be approving Phase Three after having sat through one and two and the rest and the like and took a lot of work and I'm looking at Tony as well. She was there in a lot of those meetings, so. We'll take a vote, please.
We did, didn't we?
Did we?
Yeah.
We're done.
That's a wrap.
Then I'll then I'll take another motion.
Thank you.
No, no, no motion. We'll listen to Jim and then we'll take a motion.
Okay. Mister Mayor, staff requesting the council go into executive session. Excuse me. Pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four six, four oh two, four A, purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, and sale of real per- real personal or other property interest for B conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. For E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. Specific items of discussion tonight involve the following: ongoing litigation, the Centennial Owners Association versus City of Aspen, case number twenty fifteen CB oh three oh one five eight and twenty seventeen CA two oh nine nine, and property acquisition. The property acquisition um will um involve, well, excuse me, um the property acquisition that will be discussed will not be disclosed, the specific property will not be disclosed due to market forces, negotiation strategies, confidentiality, and demands of parties involved and necessitate about, subject to the specific legal advice, which further disclosure would be a detrimental detriment to the city's strategic position. Um if council votes to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than ninety days.
Now I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for going into executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
And as usual, we will convene the executive session downstairs in the electric pass room. We will not return to this room to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, grassroots. Have a great evening. Bye, Tony. Good to see you, too. Have a good one. All right.